Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the February 16th, 2022 meeting of the Daytona Beach City Commission. We're delighted to have each of you with us this evening, and at this time, I would ask that Ms. La Magna review the procedures for tonight's meeting.
Good evening. Agendas are available on the table in the lobby and at the front of the commission chambers. All of the exhibits pertaining to items on the agenda are posted in the lobby. Please feel free to view the exhibits at any time during tonight's meeting. You are required to fill out a yellow form to speak before the city commission on topics on the agenda. Forms are available on the table in the lobby and in the front of the commission chambers. You must complete the sections that ask for your name, address, agenda item number, signature, and date. The form must be completed and placed in the designated box. Item number seven is the opportunity to address the city commission on any item that is on the consent agenda. Please indicate on the yellow speaker sheet the agenda item number of the item or items that you are addressing. Items or discussions not listed on the consent agenda will not be heard during this comment section. Agenda items under item number nine are public hearings, and citizens may speak at the designated time. And resolutions under administrative items number 10 are open for public comments, and you may fill out a yellow form to speak when that item is called. Speakers will be allowed to speak for three minutes. When you approach a lectern, please speak clearly into the microphone and give your full name and address. The three-minute clock on the monitor above the dais will start running when you begin to speak. Pay close attention to your time. You'll be told when your time has expired. Item number 12 is the public comment form, and this is the opportunity for the public to speak on any issue or topic that is not on the agenda. All citizens completing the green form will be allowed to speak for three minutes. When you approach a lectern, please give your full name and address. To sort the conduct in the public meeting of the city commission, Article 2, Section 6238 of the City Code of Ordnance reads as follows: "It shall be unlawful for any person to behave in a riotous or disorderly manner in any public meeting of the city commission or any committee, agency, or board thereof, or to cause any unnecessary disturbances therein by force, shouting, or any other action that is calculated to disrupt such meeting, order to refuse to obey any ruling of the presiding officer for such meeting relative to the orderly process thereof. Please be courteous and respectful of the views of others. Personal attacks on the city commission, city staff, or members of the public are not allowed." Please silence all cell phones and other wireless devices during the meeting. All conversation must take place either at the lectern or on the dais so that everyone can hear the business being discussed tonight.
Ms. La Magna, may we have a roll call?
Commissioner Strickland?
Present.
Commissioner May?
Here.
Commissioner Cantu?
Here.
Commissioner Henry?
Accountant four.
Commissioner Reed?
Present.
Commissioner Traeger?
Here.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry?
Here. This time, we will have the invocation led by Commissioner Traeger, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Strickland.
Heavenly Father, thank you for blessing us for this pleasant day compared to the weather we have had recently. And please watch over us, all of us, all our residents, all our citizens, all our first responders, all of our armed forces overseas, especially in light of the problems they're having over in the Balkans. Give us the patience and the wisdom to do the best that we can for our city. Guide us in the ways that you would have us go. We thank you, the Lord, for the day, for the people, for the lovely people that we have here with us for taking us through this pandemic and letting us see finally maybe a little sunshine. We pray for you. We pray with you. We pray for you. We pray that you pray for us. Amen.
.................................................................................
We'll now move on to item number four, which is approval of the minutes of the January 5th and the January 19th regular city commission meetings.
So moved.
Second.
We take a motion from Commissioner Traeger and a second from Commissioner Cantu. If there are any questions or comments, hear from the commission. Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. This motion carries seven zero. At this time, we will have our agenda approved. If there are any changes, our city manager will address them.
Yes, Honorable Mayor Commissioners, we're asking to add to item number eight M Bike Week sponsorship funds $200 to Mainland High School for the track program and $500 to Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated for their annual scholarship fundraiser for Mayor Derrick L. Henry. Add addendum item number eight N First Step Shelter Certification of Local Government Approval to the Consent Agenda. Thank you.
Second.
We take a motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner May. No questions or comments? All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Moving on to item number six, which is our presentations. Item number six A is a Beautification Awards for January 2022 and February 2022. A member of the Beautification Tree Advisory Board to present.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Marty Grimshaw, and I live at Four Graham Villasortical, and I'm member-at-large for the Beautification Award Board. The Beautification Tree and Advisory Board has selected Sharon Nochi, 335 Perfect Drive as the Residential Beautification Award winner for the month of January 2022. Sharon has been a resident of Daytona Beach for 10 years and has resided at this address for nine years. She redid all of her landscaping in her yard. The types of trees, shrubs, and plants used for beautification include Queen and Pindopalms, Ayaka Tree, Red, Yellow, Pink, White Plumeria, Crape Myrtles, Hawaiian Tea, Candelabra Cactus, Quinceaños, Berta Paradise, and other varieties not listed. City Commissioner Stacy Cantu, Zone Four, will be presenting the award. I have with me our worthy leader also, Mr. Who just arrived in town.
Good evening, Commissioners. How are you doing?
Great. How are you?
My name is Melveton Robinson, and I'm the Chair of the Daytona Beach Beautification Tree Advisory Board of the city.
Thank you for your service, both of you.
Hi. I had a chance to drive by your property. It's absolutely beautiful, and I'm honored to be able to present this award to you. And thank you for the lovely contribution to the city of Daytona Beach. And congratulations.
Marty, get on the other side.
No, this side.
On Miss Grimshaw.
Right here. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Mayor Henry, members of the city commission, and Mr. Feature. Beautification Tree Advisory Board has selected the ViStar Credit Union, 1400 West International Speedway Boulevard as a commercial beautification award winner for the month of January 2022. The bank is owned by ViStar CEO Brian Wolfberg. The bank has been in Daytona Beach for four years. The building was originally constructed in 2017 for the purpose of banking financial services. The types of trees, shrubs, and plants used for beautification included Porcuparas, Viburnium, Creepin' Juniper, Loropetilium, Indian Oathorn Trees, Cabbage Palms, Southern Magnolias, Live Oaks, Crape Myrtles, East Polacta Holly, and Drehels. Mayor Derrick Henry will be presenting the award.
Angie, likewise Derrick Henry. Nice to meet you. Welcome. Well, we always take special pride in our businesses that extend themselves and go above and beyond. So this certificate of achievement, may it be known that this certificate has been presented to ViStar Credit Union for distinguished achievement in commercial beautification. City of Daytona Beach, Florida, signed by myself, Mayor Derrick L. Henry, and Zone Six Commissioner Paula Reed.
And I bang there. That's where Laqueta was.
That's right.
McGill.
You want to stand in front of the Tensea barrier there? Yep.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
Our February residential award from the Beautification and Tree Advisory Board is Major Mobley, 728 Colfax Avenue, Colfax Drive, as the Residential Beautification Award winner for the month of February 2022. Major has been a resident of Daytona Beach for 38 years and resided at this address for 22 years. The house was built in 1954 and has seen many transitions. It's been completely remodeled inside and out. The home is designed for casual entertaining. The backyard is a small oasis that includes a fireplace built by the Mobleys. The types of trees, shrubs, and plants used for beautification include Robolini Palms, Perry Winkles, Foxtail Palms, Peace Lily, Crowton's, Crape Myrtle Iris, Purple African Iris, Christmas Cactus, Angel Trumpet, and Berta Paradise. City Commissioner Donna Henry, Zone Five, will be presenting the award. And that's this one.
So I have been by Mr. Mobley's house. I have had the ultimate tour, and it's been a while. He's added some things since I've had a tour. I think about two years ago. He has the ultimate man cave. The ultimate man cave. If you want a man cave, go to Mr. Mobley. And he has told me that he has now added a shed in the backyard as well. So he has a shed. They're living it up. So he has a beautiful property. He takes great pride in his property. I think the last time I talked to him, he was asking when I thought they may get this award again. He's already had it before. But he was ready for it again. So on behalf of myself and the rest of the city commission, we are so thankful and proud of you for the wonderful work that you do in making sure that you take pride in your neighborhood and take pride in your yard. And I can't wait to come by and see the shed.
Well, thank you.
Want to stand in front of the Tensea barrier?
Come on over. Come on over. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three. I'll call you for the man cave.
The February Commercial. Mayor Henry, members of the city commission, and Mr. Feature. The Beautification Tree Advisory Board has selected the Park at Via Corso Apartments, 310 South Nova Road, as the Commercial Beautification Award winner for the month of February 22. The property is managed by Melissa Watson. The property, formerly known as Sutton Place, has been in Daytona Beach since 1972 and was privately owned until March of 2017, when purchased by HSP Property Holdings. On December 25, 2006, an F-2 tornado hit the property. Approximately 40 of the 240 units were condemned. Units are now rebuilt and running stronger than ever. The types of trees, shrubs, and plants used for beautification include the Petrocroton, the Coxcrew Croton, the Maul Mai Red Exora, the Red Tie, the White Burt of Paradise, Potato Vine, and Viburnium. Mayor Derrick Henry will be presenting the award.
Again, Commissioner Paula Reed and I and the rest of the commission are grateful. This certificate of achievement reads, "May it be known that this certificate has been presented to the Park at Via Corso for distinguished achievement in commercial beautification. City of Daytona Beach, Florida, signed by myself and Commissioner Reed."
And I used to live there. They used to paint the grass green. You don't do that anymore, do you?
Right here. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Thank you all.
I just want to add that Melveton just flew in and wasn't sure he's going to be here tonight, so I'm substituting for him.
Marty, teamwork, stick. Teamwork.
Good teamwork.
Okay. We'll now move on to item number seven. This is public comments by people addressing the city commission. During this time, citizens have the opportunity to address the city commission on any item on the consent agenda. And my first speaker is Frederick Brown, who's speaking on eight C, E, F, and L.
Frederick Brown, 1508 Crescent Ridge, Daytona Beach. Once again, I rise to remind the city that we need to be the city of the future. And it's so very, very important because we are right here in the water. One only needs to go down to Bethune Park and see how close the water levels are getting to where the land levels are. And as I know, the mayor is acutely aware of, you know, there's going to be some serious flooding issues on the northern areas of the city, which have already been flood-prone over the years. This with this in mind that I'm, once again, reminding the city that they should seriously consider getting electric vehicles to minimize our carbon footprint. We should be setting the example. We should be doing everything we can here. The payback in the long run, of course, will be significantly less. The maintenance costs are significantly less. That's proven facts. I do appreciate that we are getting some used stuff from the county, but I don't want this to become a burden. Some of the other issues I'm very concerned about on E and F. Where it's pure to be getting locked into an AMI situation with a very small company. And the dangers of that is already been evident, as you notice if you've read the items E and F, that Census is a very small company. They've already had problems with supply chain issues. And as you know, we got quite a bit of development going out in the west part of town. If they can't supply the meters, obviously, we have to get them from elsewhere. Neptune, which is a slightly larger company, is being considered as the backup for, under item F. Again, the problem with this is the AMI network. If you're not familiar with that, stands for Advanced Metering Infrastructure. And that's the ability for us to be able to tie in all the meters automatically and be able to get a fast meter read and also a fingerprint on what our water usage is. Nothing could be more important, obviously, in a city of high growth such as Daytona Beach. Well, my concern is we're locking ourselves into smaller companies. Whereas some of your larger companies, Badger and Itron are your larger companies. Their AMI software is what they call open architecture, which in the open architecture allows you to make the modifications. And one of the problems we have with the smaller companies is you're locked into theirs. And as Director Ponis point out, it's the only one we can hook up with what we have existing. I think we need to look beyond that and get into where we look for the future again and not get ourselves trapped long-term in a small contract, a small company contract. Unfortunately, I don't have enough time to talk about item L, but that was about the design studio for the park. And I am very concerned there's no solar for daylight lighting. Thank you.
And that was my final speaker for the consent agenda.
Mayor, before you take a vote, I need to correct the record on a minor item. On item eight N, which was a late addition, it has to do with the application by First Step Shelter for a grant. The record indicates that the city attorneys are recommending approval, and that's not accurate. That would be staff recommending approval through the city manager.
I saw that at the bottom. One did.
Thank you.
Okay.
I was going to say, you put it in.
Oh, that's why. Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second?
Nope.
No motion? Looking for one. For the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Take a motion from Commissioner Traeger. We'll take the second from Commissioner Strickland. No questions? All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Okay. We'll move on to item number nine, which is our public hearings. Item number nine A is a Public Works Technical Services Division Contract for Platt Recording, Mosaic Phase Two. This is a resolution public hearing. A resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute a contract for Platt recording with BII Volusia Holdings LLC for the Mosaic Phase Two subdivision and providing an effective date.
So moved.
We have a motion from Commissioner Traeger and a second from Commissioner May.
I have no speakers for this item, Mr. Mayor.
All right. A motion and a second. You have comments or questions?
Yes, I have some comments. I just, I had discussed briefly with you, Mr. Jagger, about the LDC regarding these sidewalks. I know we're protected in here, and you guys are doing what I've asked, and we've all asked. I just want to make sure this is going to come before us for the changes.
Yes, certainly. Your question had to do with requiring the infrastructure, including sidewalks, are completed as part of the project with deadlines. The contract for Platt recording does deal with that and requires construction. We had talked about doing a glitch bill, if you will, or glitch regulations to kind of clean up our code to match what we're doing with the contract for Platt recording. Staff has got that. We'll bring that forward to you soon as it's ready.
Okay. And that'll be cleaned up with the bonds that we are doing.
Yes, this does have a bond requirement in it.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any other questions or comments? All right. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Okay. We'll move on to item nine B. It's a Development and Administrative Services, LPJA Grand Champion Proportionate Fair Share Agreement. This is a resolution public hearing. A resolution approving the LPJA Grand Champion Proportionate Fair Share Agreement between the City, Meritage Homes of Florida, Inc., and the County of Volusia, providing for the developer to pay a proportionate fair share contribution to Volusia County in relation to the LPJA Grand Champion Single Family Project, generally located at the southeast corner of Champions Drive and International Golf Drive and east of LPJA Boulevard, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement and providing an effective date.
So moved.
We have a motion from Commissioner Cantu and a second from Commissioner May.
And I do have Parker Mitchenberg here on behalf of the applicant to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Mitchenberg?
And no other speakers.
All right. A motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Moving on to nine C. It's Development and Administrative Services Planning Department, Clyde Morris Landings Expansion Proportionate Fair Share Agreement. This is a resolution public hearing. A resolution approving the Clyde Morris Landings Expansion Proportionate Fair Share Agreement between the City, Clyde Morris Senior Living Partners Phase Two LTD, and the County of Volusia, providing for the developer to pay a proportionate fair share contribution to Volusia County in relation to the Clyde Morris Landings Expanding Project, generally located on North Clyde Morris Boulevard, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Henry and a second from Commissioner May.
And I do have Jessica Gao here on behalf of the applicant for any questions and no other speakers.
Do we have any questions of Ms. Gao? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
We'll now move on to our administrative items. Item number 10A is Development Services, Amending the Code of Ordinances Bar Closing Times. And this is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending Section 10-3 of the City Code regarding extended hours permits for establishments dealing in alcoholic beverages by changing the required closing time for establishments holding extended hour permits from 3:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m., subject to exceptions on certain days, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances to exceptions on certain days, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date. And this item was continued from the December 15th, 2021 City Commission meeting.
All right. Do we have a motion?
No.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Okay. Do we have any discussion? Okay. There's no discussion. I guess we've discussed this ad nauseam. Yes, ma'am?
Something. Jeep Beach. We have a list, in case people don't know, of land development code events that we have. And then we also have a list of extra dates. To that list, I would like to add Jeep Beach because it's a growing event, and it's a family event. We have many people, different places. And I think that if we could add that to the list of special events, that will be a good addition. Thank you.
Is it related?
It can be added to.
Added to this? I have no problem with it.
If I could explain for the public maybe more than the commission. The way this amendment is set up, it would change the bar closing times from 3:00 AM to 2:00 AM, but it does provide an exception for certain days or certain periods. And the exceptions are for New Year's Eve, Fourth of July, Labor Day, and then also days declared to be a major event period by the mayor pursuant to your authority. So I believe the suggestion, or at least my recommendation, would be if you want to add additional periods, for the exception to apply, that you add it to the proclamation for the major event periods. And the reason I suggest you do it that way is because you've got a number of things in your code that are called special events, which impacts your permitting. And so this would allow consistent application throughout your code. So if that's the will of the commission, we can bring back an amendment to the proclamation adding Jeep Week to special events, which would be accepted as part of this ordinance from the 2:00 AM closing.
And what about spring break and Canadian spring break?
We can add whatever the commission's desire is. We could add, add to the exceptions.
I do not personally want spring break to be added to that. But that's, that's half the reason that I think it should be 2:00 AM, spring break. So not half, but a good portion of the reason. And, you know, I don't know. What's the purpose of Jeep Beach? Is there someone that's requesting that? Is this a, you know, I don't find it, I find it to be obviously a good event for the area, but it's.
So it's a good event, but just in case they do have special events or attracts more people, just to keep them on the list. That's all.
Well, what, so could you say the names of those again that are on there?
Yes, we identify, you know, three holidays where business would be allowed to stay up until three. That'd be New Year's Eve, July 4th, and Labor Day. And then those listed as a major event period in your proclamation, Mayor. And those events, I'll list them, there are five. Speed Weeks, which we're in now, Bike Week, Coke Zero, Biketoberfest, and the Turkey Rod Run.
Okay. I don't, I just don't want to get into a point to where, you know, we have a lot of weeks, a lot of days. We have a lot. And either we're, you know, saying that 2:00 AM is our time, this is the standard that we're moving towards, but I understand that we've had bikes in this town more than any other event I'm most agreeable to because, you know, it is an exception. We make exceptions to a lot of things in Daytona Beach for bikes.
Can I ask an additional question as it relates to this, please? So the goal is to, as I understand it, help with the area surrounding some areas of concern, let's say, in the Seabreeze area. I don't want to just pinpoint one area. My question is, are we also doing more in particular areas with regard to enforcement or surveillance or video surveillance or extra patrols? Are we doing anything in addition to just the bar closings to help the community at all? Or are we thinking it's just the bar closings?
Well, this is just, this, this item is the bar closing, and there are a lot of factors that I feel lead to a good reason to do that. And some of it is that being open at 3:00 AM doesn't give us the resources to do those things.
Okay.
It drains our resources when you allow people to drink until 3:00. So it's, it's to help that with that.
So then specifically, in the areas around the Seabreeze corridor, we've received pictures, and I've received pictures from residents showing what it looks like the next morning. So closing at two, I'm in support of this 100%. But it still does not address what could still potentially happen with the trash, with the debris, with whatever else goes on. Do we have additional plans in place, or are they coming to help with that?
I, I would agree with you, and I want to do that.
Okay.
But I think that, you know, we, this is a step to say we're serious about it, and I think we should come back and figure out how we can make it even better.
Okay.
But I would agree. Okay. All right. Okay, so we agree to add Jeep Beach?
If that's a consensus, I'll add it. And of course, we'll vote on it next meeting on second reading, assuming you move it forward tonight.
Okay. All right. Well, is there anyone who objects to adding Jeep Beach to that other list of things that we've named? None of us. Okay. All right. We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries five two.
The public hearing is set for March 2nd. Okay. Moving on to what I believe is our final item on the agenda is Item 10B. It's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Second Amendment to Clyde Morris Boulevard Industrial PD Plan Development General. Rezoning, this is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance approving the Second Amendment to the Clyde Morris Boulevard Industrial Plan District Agreement to modify landscape buffer requirements, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the Second Amendment, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner May and a second from Commissioner Reed.
And I do have Jessica Gao here on behalf of the applicant for any questions and no other speakers.
All right.
Oh, that's first reading, so yeah, it wouldn't be.
All right. All right. Okay. Have a motion. We have a second. No further comments from the commission. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Okay. That was our final item, Mr. Mayor.
All right. That concludes our business agenda. This time, we'll move through the commission comments. Mr. Strickland?
Just one or two things. We're moving along with a change so that we give the two weeks, we'll be voting on that hopefully soon, notice to the public with items where the city manager has engaged in a non-disclosure agreement. And we'll have two weeks' notice of that before it ever appears on the agenda. I don't know if everybody is in favor of that. I hope you are, and I hope we have something before us soon to vote on with that, just to make it where it, it doesn't give the appearance that we're, you know, favoring development or something like that over our residents. Our residents have every right to know that and to have time to think about it, talk about it amongst themselves, and let each of us up here know where they stand on, on things like that. And I, you know what I'm referring to is the, the deal with Amazon. And that's only fair to, to us as we sit up here and to our residents to be aware of those things way before time to vote on it. And with that, I'll let y'all off the hook tonight.
I think most of us are gonna do that tonight. Commissioner May?
So I've been, I generally am in communication with the residents in Zone Three, different parts of Zone Three. And the topic of conversation this week between them has been the potential short-term rental concept. So I would like to know, I was requested to ask about the, we were given a list. I'd like another copy of the list of all the people who were in favor of the short-term rentals. It was distributed last time. It was 112 homesteaded, and I think it was put into the record. I just can't find my list. We each received a handout. 112 of the 112, 32 were in favor of it, I believe. And I'd like another copy of that. And then my final question is, of the 112 that were homesteaded, we received a list of 32 who were in favor. I'd like to know what the rest of the residents had to say about it. Is the, I'd like to know what the rest, I mean, if there's a complete list, I would like a complete list if possible.
No, I don't have a complete list, and this was, these were informal knocks on the door, grassroots, community outreach. We spoke to the folks, and I gave the numbers. I don't even know if I denoted it on the paper, this house supports it, this house doesn't. I don't know that I would have wanted to do that if I had done that research. That was just my informal way of going out and getting out to the residents and talking to them about that agenda item before I brought it before the commission.
Okay. So right now, in the area from Oak Ridge to East ISV, it is a topic of conversation among the residents who live there full-time, who are distinction between residency versus ownership. That distinction is coming up in conversation, just to make you aware of it. Thank you.
And it's their right to do that. But a part of the, the purpose of my, of the thought is that the, the area is, is economically depressed in large part because of the lower homeownership in the region. And so it's, I think, further validates a part of the, the issues that we should be discussing.
And the following last commission meeting, the city manager and I, we went for a drive, and we went throughout Zone Three, and he went to some neighbors, who, again, some of the neighbors I know there. And he stopped, and we said, what are your concerns here? And they knew I was coming, and they had some good ideas, and I'm hoping that we'll be able to implement them soon using the CARES Fund money that we have. So we look forward to bringing you an interesting list for Zone Three beach side as well as on the other side as well. All right? We also drove up and down the corridor of Ridgewood, and that is still a concern, but we may have an idea. All right. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Cantu?
Yes, I only have a few things. First of all, this is something actually that's dear to my heart, being a daughter of a Marine and a Vietnam veteran who lost his life in Vietnam. Daytona International Speedway is having a two-day event on May 27th and May 28th, their Memorial Day. And it's free to all veterans. It's called Heroes Honor Festival. And they have approached us last year, and we've had a few meetings. They are wanting us to partner with them to have a Memorial Day parade. And I have been talking to Feacher on the 27th. Feacher? On the 27th. And we haven't worked out all the details, but it'll be on Bee Street at nine o'clock in the morning. And this festival is this welcome home Vietnam veteran festival they're having, is supposed to draw in 100,000 people. And if any Vietnam veterans would like a ticket, or you'd like to buy a ticket, you can go online to heroes honor festival dot com. They're gonna have different expos, different acts. Toby Keith is gonna be there on the 28th, and they have a lot of different things. You can go online and check it out. And are we okay with that parade by our thing that we passed?
It depends on whether you want to sponsor the parade by waiving permit fees. If you need, if you'd like to do that, as a commission, we'd need to amend the resolution you adopted last year to include that on the list of sponsored parade events.
I would like.
What is that? Is that, so Memorial Day is not one?
Memorial Day is not one.
Okay. I'm good with it. Does anybody oppose to it?
We'll bring it back to the next commission meeting for your formal approval.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. And another thing, Feacher and I, we, was it Monday? I believe it was Monday. We had a meeting, the Marine Corps, they're having their national convention here at the Hilton. They were supposed to come, I believe, in 2020, but with COVID and everything, so that should be a good event. And we're also having our state military, the Purple Hors, also having their state conviction, convention here in Daytona as, as well. And I think Commissioner Traeger and I went to that one. It was nice. And the last thing I have, I wanted to talk to about ADUs. We, it was our first one, so it was a experience, but the resident went through a lot with this ADUs. I got on, sending the emails to our city manager and stuff, and it, and she was given wrong names, and it just went on for a long time. She had the inspection, but then she said they didn't inspect the parking lot. Then I find out it wasn't ADU inspection, it was a rental inspection. It just went on for a long time, and I just don't want to see another resident go through this. So I would like to make sure our staff is having a meeting, who's in charge of what, so we can get this checklist, so it's done proper next time.
The Development Services staff, Mr. Morris, is, is aware of it, and they're working their way through the process. So we'll, if we have to have a presentation, we'll bring it back to you all, but staff is aware of the concerns. They've all received the emails, and I know that discussions have been made. So if there's a, a presentation that, for you all to have to understand the process, we'll bring that forward.
Okay. Thank you. And that's it.
All right. Commissioner Henry?
Oh, two quick things, Mr. Mayor, today, and that is that I got a call regarding baseball and T-ball. They are having workshops for the children, and they've had a very dismal turnout. And so we're going to be out in the community soliciting parents who would like for their children to participate in these free events. Then there, we're gonna do an additional one. They had one this week, and I think, correct me, Betty, this week and, and three weeks ago, and we haven't had a good turnout. So they've asked me to kind of help spread the word. So we're gonna be out in the community passing out brochures and letting people know that we would love for those children to participate in those free events. So we're gonna have another one at the Derbyshire Park, but they're gonna move this one to the bigger park over this way. And then the other thing is just that we're working on an event for a second booster shot for the children, and adults are welcome to participate. We don't have the exact date, but just stay tuned, and I will let you know when that exact date is. So it will be, the children have been able to get their booster, get their shots, so now we're going to offer that last, last event for them to get their booster shots. So we'll let you, keep you posted. And those are my two announcements. That's it.
Okay. Commissioner Reed?
Yes, sir. Mr. Feacher, who all receives your city manager's update? Is it on our website?
Yes.
Okay, great. Because I know at one point only we were getting it, but I know you said you wanted to send us.
Yeah, we've created actually a link where people can sign up to get all of our publications electronically. Once they send out to you all, they go to everybody else that signs up as well.
Very good. Very good. So from this tonight, I just wanted to announce to those who may not have access to it about us receiving a $330,000 grant from Daytona Beach Racing and Rec for the facilities and amenity updates for Daisy Stocking Park. And then I also like to let you know that the local Black pioneers that we're, we're supporting for Black History Month, that banner dedication has been changed from this Friday at noon to the 25th Friday at noon. So if you had planned on coming, it's not this Friday. It's gonna be the following Friday at the corner of Lincoln and International Speedway Boulevard. To let you know also, we're in the process of beginning to plan our, our second Daytona Beach Midtown Seafood Festival, already connected with Ms. Presley. We've got a couple of dates that the city manager and I are considering, but we gotta get the plans going. So, you know, you gotta start early. But we're looking at the month of April, and citizens asked if we would do it when the students were still in, in school, so they could partake with the festival. So we're looking at that as well. And then I just want you all to keep in, in your prayers, the Turner Heims family, she lost her son this past week, one of her sons. And as you know, she's been on our board, she runs the SAMA, and it, the loss of a child can be so devastating. So please keep her and her family in, in your prayers, Mrs. Heims. That concludes my comments.
Yes. And Commissioner Traeger?
We had the workshop about saving City Island Rec. I suggested that we have audience participation in that, that we could get the feeling of what the rest, rest of the residents feel about it. So if you do feel one way or the other, please contact one of the commissioners, and I imagine this subject will be coming up fairly soon. We are hoping to have it designated as a local historic site, which would possibly open the avenue to getting some grants, either State, or possibly Echo, or even historic grants, or Racing and Rec maybe even. But we, we were hoping to save it, and maybe a lot of this could be through grants money because it is a historical World War II. In fact, the only one I believe we have left in the city. And it would be, I think, a good addition to the Veterans Plaza and the Veterans Bridge. They were discussing on what it would be used for, and even if it's just used as a contemplate, contemplation place for those who would visit the memorial park, visit the memorial bridge. I think it would be a good addition to honor our veterans because they, some of them gave the ultimate sacrifice, and some of them just came back badly wounded, and it's going on still. So that's all I have to say.
Okay. Very well. Okay, I have a few important announcements that I think are very good news. Number one, on February 21st, at Child's Academy, from 10:00 to 12:30, there will be a vaccine location where vaccines will be offered for people of all ages. And that is on February 21st from 10:00 to 12:30 at Child's Academy. Very sorry to hear about baseball not getting off to a good start in terms of getting young people involved. Not sure what we can do to change that, but I would like to see us try as hard as we can. And so if there's anything I can do also, certainly would like to be involved. Can't say the same about basketball. Basketball season was a overwhelming success. Again, the number of participants was phenomenal. The use of our facilities just left me very pleased. The play, most of the coaching, and the young people did a great job. I would like to know how many people we had that were coaches, how many were not staff? So if you all could determine that number, and I would like to do something for those that were not on city, on our staff. So in other words, they volunteered their time. Because one of the things that you have to do if you want to improve youth rec programs is that you have to have coaches from the community. Coaches do two things. One, they coach, but most importantly, they recruit other kids to play. I can recall my father coaching three teams year-round at the YMCA. Three teams year-round, that's, he practiced from 4:00 to 5:30, 5:30 to 7:00, 7:00 to 8:30. How he did that, I still am amazed. He did that for a number of years. But he would drive his. that for a number of years. But he would drive his pickup truck through South Street and pick up kids and help get them registered to play. Because he, one, he liked having a good team, but two, and most importantly for him, he, he liked seeing kids play sports. And so he recruited. And he, and so we need coaches to help us to recruit, and families to help us to recruit, so that our kids are engaged. And with all of that being said, I would like to announce that while the season is over, Commissioner Henry's young son, her team was able to win the championship, and we're very proud of that. Two sons, they're both on the same team. So congratulations. Both of them. But I would also be remiss if I didn't acknowledge my own team. My own team of, what were they, 11 and under?
See, I knew you had G.
Nine to 11. Yes, yes, Mr. Manager. Yes, Mr. Manager. What I would like to say about that team is that I know seven of them are honor roll students out of the 10 that played, that I know. And one of the reasons that sports are so very important is that what we know is that when kids are engaged in sports, coaches influence them. But because they're engaged, they're more excited about, it just transfers to all areas of their life. And so we have to do all that we can in every area to engage our young people, because it just motivates them to do better, and it allows us to hold them accountable. The reason that I know that seven of them had honor roll was that I, one, talked to them, and then I verified it were their parents. Okay? And if I coached them year round, I would have them bring their, you know, their report cards, so that you know, you're able to push and encourage. So if we're, if we got these kids playing sports year round, it just gets better and better. And of course, you all know, and I've said this before, I really don't believe in overwhelming kids with sports until we know that they're proficient readers, or they're on track for grade level reading. Because I think that, you know, we lose, we lose balance of what's most important. But I do know that with kids, you know, when they start playing sports, they lose their minds, because they all tend to think that they're going to be in the NBA or the NFL. But that's okay, too. That balances itself out with due time. Then I also would want to mention that the Statuary Committee, I'd like to thank Commissioner, County Councilperson Billy Wheeler, and Bob Gertman, and the Echo Board, because they have donated $25,000 to the Mary McLeod Bethune Statuary Process. And also, yeah, $25,000 goes a long way with the statue. We have raised in excess now of $800,000 for the statue. We are very happy to announce that the statue has a firm official date, that it will be installed in Statuary Hall on July 13th, I think at 11:00 AM in Washington, DC. So Ms. Yarborough, we know that we need to get ourselves ready to deal with that. Second date is August 18th. The bronze statue will be installed here in Daytona Beach. So we, as a city, should be extremely proud of our response to dealing with this important part of our legacy. And I think we've done an enormous job. I'd like to thank the Police Department, the city manager, and everyone who helped us to successfully house the statue here in our city. It was a Herculean effort with 17 sponsors from across the city. And I'd also like to thank Louis, our latest example of making a difference with Nancy Lohman and the statue, is going to be, I think, our biggest one of all. It's been, it's very well done. And when you watch it, it's the longest one, but you'll learn a lot about the statuary process, as well as the heritage of Dr. Bethune. And that concludes my comments. Mr. Manager?
Yes, just two, two items. The staff, myself, Ms. Goodman, Keith Willis, and our attorney met with Dr. Fritz, with the school board and his team this morning to talk about the partnership for the Terry T. Small School. They're building a new school, so we are working on some things to make sure that there are programs at the old school. Keith Willis and his team have been working to bring back a after-school program that was at that facility many years ago. And so we're going to work, once they transition the Terry T. Small to the new school, we'll be coming back to the commission to see how can we better partner with the school board, who wants to do some more programming to make sure that the students, when they leave the school, have access, as well as parents. I just want to make sure you all are aware that we are meeting with them regularly. And Keith Willis and Betty are our leads, and me and Mr. Jagger, as well as the Leisure Service Team will meet with the school board and their attorneys on site in the very near future. One of the things that you all, as a commission, have done that has been very successful is to waive them a permit fees in a certain area, centered around the Midtown area. And when you look at the numbers for the past year, it is astounding what the waiver of the permit fees have done and what your leadership has brought to the table. And it's within our city manager's report. But if you know, we have seen, based on their percentage, a 600% increase over the same time period in the previous year, where last year, we had for commercial permits pulled between this time of October 2020 and February 2021, we had seven permits pulled for commercial in this zone where we waived permits. We've had 31 to today. So you can see an increase, and that's commercial. And residential, October 2020 through February 2021, we had five last year. This year, we've had 53 permits pulled within the zone where you all have waived fees. And so we're seeing an increase of that process. The value is going up on those properties that are able to get new fences, new AC, new doors. And so we're seeing that worked out, and we hope to see the success of it. And so it really adds value to those jobs. And when you can go from seven commercial to 31, and five residential to 53, it does work. And so one of the things we're going to probably be bringing up, based on conversations we had with other commissioners, how do we do that more, if necessary? But we can see the value of that. You all, as a commission, really trying to figure out how can we help to improve the quality of life for our residents. So thanks to the staff, that means P and L is working a little harder, because some people may not understand the whole process, so they're willing to communicate and talk and help to, help them to be able to get through the process as well. So Mr. Morris, please tell your staff, we're appreciative of it. But from a leadership standpoint, this could not be possible if it wasn't for you all, as commission, making that effort to waive those fees. So thank you very much. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. I also wanted to make sure that I mentioned the name of Coach Stacy Beckton, who managed the basketball league. He did an outstanding job from top to bottom of managing that league and making sure that it was competitively balanced, and just a lot of nuances to making for what I thought was, again, an outstanding season. So kudos to Coach Beckton and everyone who worked with the project. Any other comments?
Mayor, yes, I would just like to recognize our elected official out there in the audience, Rob Littleton, Water Beach Commissioner.
All right. All right, Rob, welcome. Thank you for joining us tonight. No other comments? Bob, you got something?
Nothing further, Mayor.
Okay. All right, this concludes the commission portion at this time. It will be our honor and privilege to hear from our residents.
Okay. Our first speaker tonight is Frederick Brown, and on deck is Kennedy Jacob Senior.
Frederick Brown, 1508 Crescent Ridge. First of all, I want to thank Commissioner Cantu for, for support of the Hero's Honor. I'm already signed up, of course, and I'll be there, part of the honor guard. So I am looking forward to the event. She also downplayed a lot of the things that are going on. It's going to be a big event, and I'm going to be very appreciative of any support the city gives to that. I also want to thank Commissioner Traeger for her kind remarks about the veterans as well. I'm really looking forward to our Veterans Park being completed. I hope, and I realize it's a county project, but I do hope the city does put a little leaner on them to expedite it. I know it's been held up for quite a while, and it's going to be a beautiful part of the city. Couple other items I wanted to talk about tonight as well. Again, as a reminder, and I know the mayor is very much in support of the parks, you know, we are anxiously waiting to see what the outcome of the property is. And there's quite a few people are very interested in what's going to happen there. I feel we have a very good case, and I'm looking forward to the city getting our land back. There are additional properties also that should be considered in the future. One of the main ones that I see that's very evident is Lennox Avenue is another area that should be cleaned up, made park-like again for river access. There's another number of properties, too, and I know I've talked this with the mayor as well, that are going to be a chance of a lifetime. And I realize some of them are pricey, but there are some terrific opportunities for parks, especially along the river. The Halifax River is a beautiful area of our city, and if we're able to acquire them through whatever funding we might be able to get, that would be, again, highly appreciative. I continue to ask for a task team for traffic safety. Again, I hate to see any more tourists or citizens get killed on our highways. I am reminded daily, because I have to drive by where the lady was killed last year, and I hate to see that happen. Again, I urge the city to put together a task team, and I'd love to serve on that as well. The other thing I want to talk about, I'm really glad to see the road paving kicking to high gear. Unfortunately, it seems that we're doing a little nickel and diming out in the field. There is a thing called a greed book, and I know the budgeting was based on a 12-foot wide pavement. And what I'm seeing out there, and I dug out by hand so that they would see it clearly where the original road base is, and they came up a few feet short on my street. My street's fairly busy. The other thing you're getting real short on is they're not painting lines fully like they were before. This also is going to be important to the future of automated vehicle driving. So I hate to see us trip over pennies and, or me, the pennies.
Our next speaker is Kennedy Jacob Senior, and on deck is Marjorie Johnson.
Kennedy Jacob, 1655, Mam Drive, Porter Orange. I'm back, Mr. Mayor and the commission. Your last meeting, I came to present it about the African American Family Institute, soliciting some financial support and helping the community and families. I was asked to forward to your emails information about the event. I don't know if everybody received that or not. And so I was back tonight to, to really ask if there are funds that are available to help support this community event. We are trying to educate families, family enrichment, bringing platforms that residents, as well as experts within the community, can talk about the issues that are affecting our families. And I think it's a very viable program as it relates to prevention for children and for families who are trying to expand and to become sustainable. And so I'm trying to help the community in doing that type of work. And so I wanted to kind of hear from the commission tonight if there was any consideration of any financial support from perhaps some of the commissioners.
Dr. Jacobs, I need to step in here. The manager's not here. This would normally be a question from the manager, but we do have a policy and a procedure for commissioner support through the Bike Week sponsorship funds for events. And so a couple of quick questions for you. Is the event going to be in Daytona Beach?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what location will it be at?
It's on Mary McLeod Bethune Boulevard, at Mount, New Mount Zion Baptist Church on the corner right there before the railroad tracks. Mary McLeod Bethune to the right.
Very good. Thank you, sir. And is your company, is it a 501(c)(3)?
It is. It's a subsidiary of a 501(c)(3), yes.
A subsidiary. What is it under? Which?
Trinity City of Praise is the 501(c)(3). The African American Family Institute is incorporated as a subsidiary by the state of Florida.
Very good. Thank you very much, sir.
Okay. I would be supportive of this effort, but I would also like to find a way to, it's important. And so I mean, I would want to donate 500 from Bike Week funds to support the effort. But I, I want to figure a way to, our families have a lot of needs, and I know you know them.
Yes, sir.
I know that you know them. But, you know, maybe, you know, we'll have to talk. But it has to be something that makes sure that we get them, because I know that this is, the information is going to be great. I'm just concerned about what happens all the time, you know, it's been happening.
Well, there's a continuum. The African American Family Institute is an actual institute that we are trying to partner with Child's Academy. So this symposium leads to a regular monthly platform with families, children, youth, all the alike, and come and get family enrichment. That's the purpose of the symposium. In order to get the families engaged, then we have a continuum month follow that education.
Yeah, because that's, that's what we need.
Yes, sir.
We need that continuum. Okay, I'll leave it alone.
I will donate 250.
I have a question for Mr. Kennedy. February 25th and 26th, that's a Friday and a Saturday?
Yes, it is.
And it starts at 9:00 AM?
Yes, 9:00 AM to 2:30. There's a break, then we have a Friday evening, a call to prayer for families. And then Saturday is 9:00 to 2:30 is as well a break. And then we have a youth presentation that the youth will be presenting that Saturday night.
Okay. A little concerned about the time, but wondering, Friday at 9:00, you know, most of us are at work, and the kids are at school. But I will match Commissioner Cantu's 250 for another 500.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed. Thank you.
I will also. 250.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, we're going to vote on it.
250 for me as well.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Strickland.
So that it can be added in, and staff can execute it.
How, how are you going to?
Yeah.
To address Commissioner Reed's question, how are you going to have families there on a Friday morning? I'm curious.
There's several things we're doing. First of all, we're trying to find agencies that have in-house programs, like Center Pace for Girls, Pace Center for Girls. We're also through the university, there are courses that relate to families, social work, even in the school of religion, how religion affects family dynamics. And so we're trying to pull those, those pieces together. But more importantly, there are families that are at home, middle-aged, because we're doing the whole scope of families. That means the elderly and the alike. And there's an, Mrs. Jeter is over the seniors program, and they're trying to get the seniors involved as well, because we're trying to say, how do we look at family dynamics as a whole? And so there are different components we're trying to pull together.
Mr. Kennedy, we have, Pastor Kennedy, we have five senior races. Ms. Jeter's only over the one that's at Midtown. There's one at Dickerson Centers, Nebley, at YSG. We have a total of five.
Okay, well, thank you for sharing that. Yes, ma'am.
And then, are you also in contact, I'm assuming you are, you're in contact with Housing Authority?
Yes, I have met with, they have a new management company as well in the Soul City area. So I met with her this week, because again, this is a continuum. It's not just a one-time event. We're trying to find out how do we create that program on a regular basis.
Okay. Yeah, I know you called me, but I'd like to continue my idea, because this is what's needed, as we especially, it's a part of addressing COVID. And it's just a whole reaction to providing the resources for our families and education that they need. And I know the forceful nature and the capacity of these people that you have, that you have working with you. This has the potential to, to make some impact in the community.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just for information, how do I follow back up with?
The clerk will contact.
The clerk will contact you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you.
If you do intend to vote on that tonight, the motion, public comment, et cetera.
All right, we have, do we have a motion to support this initiative? Take a motion from Commissioner Reed, and a second from Commissioner May. All right, do we have any public comment? There's no public comment? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 7-0. You voted?
I did.
Yes.
I just want to reiterate, to make sure I have the right numbers. So I have $500 from the mayor, 250 from Commissioner Cantu, 250 from Commissioner Reed, 250 from Commissioner May, and 250 from Commissioner Strickland.
Yes.
Who walked out the door.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
All right, our next speaker is Marjorie Johnson, and on deck is John Nicholson.
Marjorie Johnson, Peachtree. I'm here tonight to address the problem that we have in other pavilion opposite of Owl. I addressed it at the last meeting, and I went there and looked, and there was bird feces all over that pavilion since you became the mayor, Derek Henry. That facility was open to the public, so right now it's closed. We need it opened. We need the feces removed. We need the benches put back, and we need the tables put back, and we need the people to, for the taxpayers, residents of this community, to have access to that pavilion. Also, I'm on the library board of Belushi County, and that lot is in deplorable condition. It's been like that for some time, and it needs to be fixed. There's a holes all out there. There's money here now, and that money, some of that money should go to repair that lot. You've been sitting here three or four terms. Lot was, the pavilion was open to the public prior to you taking office and some of these commissioners. But we want the public to have access to our accommodations. I went with one of the, here's Strickland up to Harmon, beautiful accommodations up there. He went up there one day with me. He was able to see that they had the chains on them, but they removed that. So I would like for you to go up there and open that up, fix that lot out there with all those cracked up holes on that pavement. The library and the county owned the library, but the city owned that lot out there. Also, I would like to say that I am looking at my street there. Commissioner Reed, you need to go down there and get that lot cut again in the 200 block, next to Timmer Ray, it stays pretty tall again, just like that every three weeks. And it's a problem. I've got a people company in my house saying, Marjorie, why is this lot like this? I say, because whoever owned the property, and I don't know who owned the property, but it does need to be fixed. So also there on Maple Street, go all the way down to the end, there's buses on one of the property, a lot of trucks, yard all over with the trash there. The last part of Maple Street, you need to go down there and look at that. I'm getting complaints from the people that they need to clean that up, and it does need to be cleaned up, because trash and clothes and all kind of boxes out there, that is deplorable. That is in Zone 6. So I'm saying to you tonight, you're here to do the people's work, and we are having some roads paved, and we need to get the lot out here. It all needs to be paved.
Our next speaker is John Nicholson, and on deck is Tawana Hicks.
John Nicholson, 413 North Grammy Avenue. Last week, the mayor spoke about short-term rentals. He failed to mention in his entire speech that he was talking about the entire beachside CRA. He also failed to mention, after he mentioned Surfside Village, Surfside Village, Surfside Village, Surfside Village, he did not mention the city of Seabreeze. As you remember, in 1925, there was a city of Daytona Beach and a city of Seabreeze. The city of Daytona Beach is in this CRA, all right? Half the city of Seabreeze is in this CRA. He spoke about the poverty in the area. I do not consider homes in the million-dollar range poverty. I do not consider homes in the half-million-dollar range poverty. There are over 100 properties over a half-million dollars. Those homes on the river are not poverty. Trust me. My neighbor sold for 650. Two houses past that was 699. Behind me, 750. All right? So there's six houses on my block over half-million dollars, and an apartment complex, which is several million. So there's two different areas, and I wish you to exclude the Surfside Village, which is one section, which there are poverty, and there are poor people in my end, but there are also very, very expensive homes that are going on the rise. To pull down the value of these properties, it does not make sense. So I'm asking you to look at it carefully. Plus, ownership in my end is much higher than ownerships south of Main Street. Bar closing, all right? I ran bars, largest bars in Miami, all right? The money comes in after the other bars close. You can tell me, if you ever worked for tips and ever went out afterwards, did you buy Rotgut, or did you buy Top of the Line? Most people that are in the service industry will buy Top of the Line. And when you buy Absolute, Tankeray, Patron, you're gonna pay the price for it. And those people give tremendous amount of money to these institutions. I went for six months checking out Seabreeze, six months. No trash. When they talk about trash, trust me, there's more trash on the boardwalk than there are in Seabreeze at 3:00 in the morning on Friday and Saturday nights. The noise, there is no noise. I stood on Glenview, walked up and down, no noise. Oak Ridge, no noise. All the arguments are not there, all right? The area has now decreased considerably. When we started talking about this, at 3:00, there would be 800 kids up and down that street, basically on two blocks. This past Friday, less than 100. The hookah bar was where they're all at. They would have 400 or 500 kids standing in front of the hookah bar. This past weekend, 42. Look at it carefully before you change it. We are a tourist industry.
Our next speaker is Tawana Hicks, and on deck is Sandy Murphy.
Tawana Hicks, 445 Pine Street. My concern is the North Street area between Ridgewood and Segrave. It's where I live at, and I'm just frustrated with what's going on in my zone. I contacted my commissioner. I've yet not heard from her yet to this day. I went forward and contacted the city manager. He acted, and things had improved. But today, when I moved to this day, it's back to the norm. You can't drive your car through there, they're crossing the street, the women are laying on the ground. Something needs to be done. Something needs to be done. Please.
Ma'am.
I'm asking, I'm begging. I've been in the neighborhood for 50 years. It's time for a change. It's time.
Ma'am, Ms. Hicks, Ms. Hicks, I'm Commissioner May. I have been addressing this problem. I apologize for not returning your call, but I want you to know that in the background, what's already happened is a meeting was held about a month and a half ago, I want to say, at City Hall, where we brought in the chief of police, all the nonprofits in the area, the city manager. We were all present, and I said to them, the residents in that area are not enjoying this experience right now. I represent the Uptown area on a regular basis. If you come to the meetings, you will hear me say, and you heard me say it tonight, what are we doing about Ridgewood? What are we doing about Ridgewood?
I don't hear you, but I'm seeing you.
And I understand that.
Seeing you, and I don't see you. Don't see you. And I need this be, I need, I gotta be visible for me.
Sure.
I need to see you. I need to see you.
Ma'am, I have no problem.
It's really frustrating me.
Ma'am, I apologize. One second. Ma'am, I.
Keep it up.
Okay. Our next speaker is Sandy Murphy, and on deck is Doyle Lewis.
Sandy Murphy, 136 Park Avenue. I want to talk about the workshop that was held this evening. I was really disappointed with some of the discussion that I heard there. First of all, staff presenting things such as, it's not known when this building was built, and you have seen the articles raising concerns about flooding that has not happened in the decades that that has been built there. I think that staff came in with a preconceived notion and presented an argument that supported that and didn't talk about the rest of it. They talked about dollars and cents, they did not talk about value. In Daytona Beach, at the beginning of the Second World War, that property symbolizes the fact that our community came back from a dead stop where we could have just been obliterated because of the lack of tourist income. And we had a few people in this town, like Mary McCloud Bethune, and the businessman who went and recruited Senator Claude Pepper, who brought money into this town, $5 million a month at that time, by bringing those opportunities, the training opportunities, to this town. And as a result, this building came to be built because we had a town full of people spending their money, and they needed another place to have their activities. They were overwhelming the town. This has meaning to our town. World War II was a big deal here, and we have nothing that tells the world that that was the case. This building is an opportunity to do that. It has value as a piece of history. It is not the most beautiful building in the world. It is not spectacularly architecturally, but it has value in that it helps us tell a story. It's a story that ties in with that Veterans Memorial Bridge. It's a story that ties in with the Plaza. We can think of uses for that property. This city needs a medium attractive event space. That's one possible use. You know, maybe it becomes a satellite, because we know that the Veterans Museum is gonna be squashed over at the Cornelia Lung Library. Maybe it becomes a satellite for specialty displays on a certain era. Maybe it becomes yet another little cafe place to bracket the Esplanade at one end, the rec center at the other, and the Josie Rogers House. There are so many opportunities. This is not money taken away from the taxpayers. This is a special item where special money will be used to maintain, to improve that property. We killed it with neglect, with malicious neglect, and it deserves to be maintained, repaired, brought back to life, and used to show the history of this town.
Our final speaker tonight is Doyle Lewis.
I'm here to speak, my name is Doyle Lewis, Daytona Beach, United States. I'm here to speak on the City Island first, City Island Park, and getting it back to where it used to be, with picnic tables, some barbecuers, and having it opened up and making sure it's repaired. The parking lot is awful. You walk through it, or you ride a bicycle through it, it's to the point of dangerous. It's rough on almost every level. It might be because it's been flooded a couple times, but we definitely need to get that park back up to par. The grass is looking awful around the pavilions. That has been chained up for a long time, but the chain is down now. One of the tops, the tin roof, it's blowing off, and there's soffit falling off of some of them too. That's been neglected for a long time. It needs to be looked at. The, if you look at the Recreation Center, and if you read the side of the building, it says it's City Island Recreation Center. I never noticed that until I started looking at it this past month. So that's been a sore situation for a long time. It's been neglected. The people that are actually in the city of Daytona Beach should understand that that's a nice park that has a library. It's connected to education, and that is starting to be used by a lot of people that's using electric scooters, electric bicycles. We need some more places where electric bicycles can be locked up, because the bicycle racks are actually being filled. There's not enough bicycle racks. The whole place has been neglected by the city. It was closed down to make sure people couldn't use it for a while. So it's time. Everything else is being rebuilt. Get that looked at. The second thing I'm talking about tonight is First Step Shelter. It doesn't seem like they're actually having too many guests been by there. There's about 10 cars, 20 cars there. I definitely don't think they have enough clients. There are a lot of people still on the streets in Daytona Beach. There should be a way to open it up for more, and I am actually one of them, because I went through something else again. So that building is taking a lot of funds, a lot of grants, and they're not having the clientele they should. That should be definitely looked at. It's been an issue since the beginning. There's always gonna be a virus of some sort somewhere. I believe that is not the case with this building. If you do not, this is good. Thank you.